Good evening, everyone. Please welcome to the April 3rd, 2018 Meeting of City Council. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Qualchik?
Here.
Councilmember Eisen?
Here.
Mayor Penrose?
Here.
Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. Can we rise to pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are going to move on to the graduation of our Spring NET program. Tonight, we're honoring the graduates of the Spring 2018 NET program. NET stands for Network Engage and Transform. For those of you that do not know, Happen by NET is a multi-week community academy that brings together participants in a weekly gathering for activities which focus on the services provided by the city: administration, public safety, recreation, the library, and community development. I believe that the program helps people get a better understanding of how our city operates and how we make decisions. And most importantly, it introduces community members to not only city employees but also to other people who live and work here. So tonight, we're going to honor these graduates who have not only met and spent time with staff and council, but have made connections with each other. And that's really what building community is all about.
So I'm going to channel our Vice Mayor Harvey Warbach this evening. He couldn't be with us because he is ill. So I want to say thank you to Mayor Penrose. I want to stress on behalf of the City Council and city staff how much we truly value the relationships we've developed over the course of the NET program. People we didn't know before and now have developed ongoing relationships with, hopefully working together on projects in the future. And we're thrilled at how the members of this class have gotten to know each other and connected with each other, not just the council and staff. So I'd like to have the council join Mayor Penrose and myself by the podium so that we can award our candidates their graduation certificates. You too, Leta.
Just between some music.
Now hold this. I'll do the next.
All right. First up is Brian Churchwell.
You take every other one.
We're switching.
Ellen Clark. Congratulations, Jan.
Thank you. Come on back now.
Don't forget me.
You're next. Joyce Logan, I think is not here this evening. So Stephanie Morales. Stephanie is not here this evening either. Heidi King-Rysheder. Not here tonight either. Jacquelene Rogers? Okay. Mary Stadler-John Zabo? Michael Thompson?
Yes.
All right. Okay, and now the Friends of the Library have a presentation.
Okay, so on behalf of all of the Board of the Friends, which we are missing a fair number of them tonight, but there are a few core people here who have been involved for a long time. We just want to say how excited we are to be here. We've been working at this for a long time, both just whining and nagging about a new library and then to the actual fundraising. So it is so exciting to actually see what is going up over there on Correa Street. And I know all of you got to visit it recently as well, and it was breathtaking to walk upstairs in that library. So we are absolutely thrilled. And we are very excited tonight to be handing over what we hope is just a small portion of what will eventually come. Now that the naming policy is going into place, I think it's going to make fundraising take off again. We've gotten a number of people checking in with us to find out now that they see the building going up. They're very excited. So we're very excited tonight to be handing over a check. But before we do, I also just wanted to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors, to past council members, to the JPA, and to the current City Council for being involved and helping. And we do look forward to working with all of you as we continue this process. So tonight, we are happily handing over a normal-sized check, but for a large sum of money of $346,000. That's on top of... That's on top of the $132,000 that we passed over to the city a few months ago. And that's for a total of $478,000, but we hope to add to that in the months to come. So thank you very much. So if we can present that to Mayor Penrose?
Thank you so much.
If I may add some words to the mayor. I want to also acknowledge Hope and the Friends of the Library that when we were pushing for this project and it seemed like there was no hope, and we had to do the audacious thing of fight to get a library approved in our community. Hope, you and the Friends were always a beacon to follow. And maybe there was some wavering internally, but externally it didn't show. And thank you for this generous donation from the Friends and for all the Friends for contributing and making all of this happen. It's going to be an epic thing for our community. So I just want to recognize you for that. Thank you.
Yes, and I'll echo that. Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work that you continue to do and that you've been doing all along while we've had our interim library. Bless you all. It's time to eat. So we'll take a short break. Okay, grab your cake, your food, your drinks, and let's reconvene, yes, council meeting?
Another public forum?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, we're moving on to public forum, and we have four speakers tonight. Anybody else that wishes to speak, please fill out a blue card and take it over here to staff. First, we have Sue Henkenhaus, followed by Eric Hollister.
Okay, I'll do that next. Yes, go ahead. Hello. I'm here to voice my opinion about your position on cannabis regulation, and why I think it's important to allow a dispensary in Half Moon Bay. My name is Sue Henkenhaus. I am a health educator, and I've worked in San Mateo County for over two decades. I work both with children, and families, and with older adults. I have resided in this area for 35 years. My children went to school here, and my grandson goes to school here right now. I believe your decision of non-action will have the greatest impact on seniors in our community. I have many friends and acquaintances who, like myself, are retiring or getting close to retiring. Many cannot drive the distance required to visit a dispensary. They are older, have some health problems, have limited mobility, and are in need of medicinal benefits of cannabis. The coast side community supported the legalization by 67%, but it seems that whether or not it should be legal is still being debated. I've heard arguments about access to children, but there's no data supporting that position. Having regulations will provide more oversight and will result in even more limited access. The financial benefits to Half Moon Bay are significant. Investments in this industry will create jobs and stimulate the economy. It will allow Half Moon Bay to participate in the economic boon. It's hard for me to understand Half Moon Bay's position on this issue. I'm here to ask you to reconsider this position. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Sue. Eric Hollister?
City Council, you've heard most of this before, so I'm going to actually address the community in this, so I apologize for not making eye contact. Please let me explain who my partner and I am and who we are not. We are not dope growers. We are men and women with families of small children. We are not drug users or interested in full-scale cannabis, but we are the only ones applying for a nursery permit. Our farmers and workforce are not charity cases. They want the opportunity to make more money with a new agricultural product, and young Half Moon Bay graduates would love the opportunity to work with and work where they grew up, excuse me. Our workforce can look forward to a higher pay, healthier jobs, and health insurance. The out-of-pocket expenses for healthcare drives families to get two jobs and be away from their children while growing up. Nurseries are not cartels. We are not the federal government, and our plants are not psychoactive. We do not use pesticides for starts as well. Our workforce will also enjoy contractual agreements. Now, parents won't have to worry about what their kids will think when their parents are working in the marijuana industry, because their work will bring a better lifestyle for their family. I asked a local Latino farm manager here in Half Moon Bay, who had fears of cultivating any form of cannabis, what his thoughts about growing starts would be. After seeing the state-regulated nursery in Salinas a few weeks ago, he said, quote, "Before this tour, I didn't want to grow marijuana." Looks at my daughter in the backseat and says, "Now I want to grow marijuana." And I said, "What about the kid access?" He said, "With children, I'm not worried about them stealing plants. We support low-income housing and some form of rent control, so our workforce can succeed even more so with our business model." There are no studies showing that other youth, or showing that our youth being negatively impacted by cannabis nursery. We have 20 to 25 workforce families who will have a parent at home after kids get there from school, because they'll only work a nine-to-five job during the week. Portions of tax revenue, if regulated, will go to education and alternative activities, which are geared towards youth, and know that they're risk for using and addiction. Cannabis already exists here on the coast side. It always has. The only difference is that cannabis you see on the street is black marketed and is called moonshine weed. It's very dangerous. However, it's not the government's job to regulate our parents, our kids effectively. It is their job to keep the public safe and make sure that any harmful or deadly products do not make it into our possession, including dangerous cannabis. Environmentally speaking, nurseries and starts require less additives and pesticides, if at all, than traditional agricultural or full-scale cannabis cultivation. Rebuilding the dilapidated greenhouses under strict Californian coastal regulations begets a cleaner and safer greenhouse and conditions with less energy and gas consumption, which reduces strain on the grid and considerably less water consumption than a traditional agricultural being farmed there currently, drastically reducing the wear and tear on the grid, the water table, and the natural resources that surround the property. Let's keep in mind, if Rocket Farms is allowed to grow starts, they must, by California regulations, blackout the light pollution that is emitted into our dark skies. Big plus for me and my family. Security or theft risk is anything but a problem. Our property is nearly inaccessible right now without cannabis, and the ability for anyone to get to a state-regulated cannabis facility is next to impossible. Thank you so much for your time. I won't finish this long, dilapidated speech.
Thank you, Eric. Joaquin Jimenez, followed by Jessica Hopkins.
Good evening. I want to follow up from a couple weeks ago. Last week, I had an experience. I was doing a little bit of outreach, you know, for the listening session for City Council for the 10th, and I spoke with a few families on the coast about rent control. And there's fear, you know, there's fear in the community. Different stories came to be, they do not like to tell the landlords about certain of the appliances, you know, breaking down. They have the fear of, you know, asking to leave, you know, being asked to leave. Some of the landlords, you know, they take a while to come by and fix a refrigerator, fix a stove. Some of the tenants, you know, they do their own fixing for the same reason, you know, they don't want to push any buttons on the landlord, you know, give them a reason to be asked to move. Another family that got asked to move, you know, they asked, the landlord kept complaining about the way that this person used to park the vehicle. Eventually, you know, that person was asked to leave his apartment with his family. A family of four, you know, husband and wife and two children. and two children. So the fear is real. I did ask them, "Would you like to speak to the newspaper about it? Would you like to tell your experience?" No names would be mentioned on the article, and still were not... They would not approve coming forward, speaking out. So maybe you will be able to do something. Maybe we can work something out. There is all kinds of fear in the community. There's different issues that are going on. And yes, my luck. The community knows me. They know who I am. They share some of these stories with me. They have shared some of our stories with other people in the community. And they don't want to come forward, though. I asked them, "How come you don't come forward and say something?" Because there's a fear. And it's not a good thing to live in fear. And some of the families are already in fear of deportation, ICE coming around, taking one of the family members away, and now losing the housing. It's not a good way to live. There's no such living when you live in fear. I know there's something, maybe, that you could do. And I'm waiting for April 10th for you to be able to listen to the community, and hopefully, some of these members will come forward and actually speak out and actually tell you how they fear and how they feel about housing in the area and other issues. Transportation, public transportation is another issue that came about. So I'm looking forward to the 10th. I'm planning to be there together with a lot of Latino members from this community and tell you, share with your labor something or how we feel about our community. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joaquin. Jessica Hopkins, followed by Sam Rashkin.
Hi, I'm Jessica. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. I'm a resident of Half Moon Bay, and I have prepared some notes so I can make sure to say everything. I understand that you need some encouragement to keep the discussion of cannabis ordinances on the table. And so I'm here to speak in support of that. I am a medical cannabis patient. It is the only thing that adequately and safely relieves my pain from two exceedingly painful diseases. Without this medicine, I would have to spend almost all of my time in bed. I was recently in another country for many months where I had no access. There was no legal cannabis. And I did spend 99% of my time in bed. It was horrible. Without this medicine, I would have to spend almost all my time in bed. With this medicine, as you can see, I am able to have a life and function in this world. I am here to tell you that after 22 years of legalization without the sky falling in, I don't understand why the very necessary discussion of local cannabis ordinances is in danger of ending before it has barely started. I would like to see a medical cannabis dispensary in Half Moon Bay. I resent the fact that based on imaginary fears and outdated reefer madness thinking, I cannot access my medicine in my own town. While, yes, I would like to access to my medicine, I am not selfish enough to ask to bring something into my community if I thought it would harm my community. Nothing in the entire enterprise of accessing my medicine or using it or even barely resembles any illicit acts or tawdriness. State laws protect everyone involved to make it a quiet, legal, simple act of buying and paying for medicine, then going home and dosing with it, followed by a relieving of my pain, and then getting on with my very normal life. My experience of sourcing my medicine at far-flung dispensaries, I have not seen other than discreet, quiet, calm, safe places that are not eyesore's or threatening in their locations or communities. However, I am lucky to have a car to reach these dispensaries around San Francisco Bay to get my medicine, though it is getting annoying and painful to drive so far when I should be able to buy legal medicine in my own town. I am now getting most of my medicine from a San Francisco-based delivery service. Besides the ridiculous nature of that scenario, I am additionally offended by the fact that my considerable amounts of money spent immediately leaves this community without exchanging hands once. It goes directly to San Francisco, which does not need my money. That money does nothing for Half Moon Bay. I urge and support this council to allow the discussion of cannabis ordinances to continue without drama, to move forward in establishing the ordinances necessary to allow me and others like me to access our medicine locally. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Sam Rashkin, followed by Terry Marowitz.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Sam Rashkin. I live in Monterey County. I'm here today to talk about the increasing homelessness problem we have across the nation, especially here in California and most especially here in the Bay Area. We know it's caused by housing cost increases. We don't talk about the healthcare bankruptcies. We're saying a lot of homeless people I'm meeting now started with a healthcare problem, which I didn't see. And then there's cost of living across the spectrum. Every time a government agency raises a sales tax by half a percent or the DMV raises its fees by $20 or $30, some of these families have $100 in discretionary income per month, and it's a big impact. We know that the problem exceeds any single community's ability to fix. We do know that. But we also know that, working together, there's a lot we can do. In terms of Half Moon Bay specifically, there's bad news and good news. Bad news is, a whole season has come by since I've been here, and not a lot has been done that could have been done to protect the health and the welfare of the people living in some of our homeless concentrations. The good news is, a lot of cities are facing the exact same problem. And the homeless people like little parks, like river areas. So it's almost identical, just on a larger scale. Bigger cities have more resources that they can invest. So they've already done it, and now we can look at the results and the data and the outcome. And the answer is, some ideas work and some don't. We can cover those later. But postponing really is always costly. It never goes down. Any good homeless program always starts with neighborhood concerns, drug use, human waste, localized petty crime, wildfires, public intoxication. Contagious disease outbreaks aren't discussed a lot. But now we know from the Santa Ana cleanup, they found 14,000 hypodermic needles, 5,000 pounds of human waste. We know from the San Diego cleanup, they found 2,000 high-end bicycles that had been stripped for recycling, so $700 worth of aluminum bike frame being sold to aluminum scrap yards. If you look at the wildfire data from this last season, about 20% of those fires are transient occupancy fires. We always have public intoxication, and then, once again, contagious disease outbreaks. In terms of community economic concerns, I'm going to go fixate on this contagious disease outbreak or epidemic. If that happened, it would be huge and fast because the homeless people live behind where we sell food, and they use the same restrooms that food handlers use. So we have to be aware of that. I'd like to get them restrooms next week with sanitation. And then there's community and business costs. When people feel less safe or less comfortable, they're always less likely to spend time and money at a given commercial district. So it's in all of our interests to clean this up. Based on the data we have now, I know that there's three major catalysts for action that forces change. One is human rights groups or environmental groups that focus on living conditions, human waste, or environmental destruction. They always win. They force change. Homeless advocacy groups have had a lot of success. Stepping in, once you start, you're old. I'd like to follow up with some more one-on-one discussion about the homeless problem, what we can do right here to fix it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sam. Terry Marowitz.
Hello. I'm here, really, in support of continuing the discussion around marijuana in this community, rather than have it be dropped as a non-action. So that's a few words.
Thank you, Terry. I skipped something in our agenda, and I have to go backwards now. So Mayor's announcements of community activities. There is docent training that's beginning for our coastside museum at the Half Moon Bay Jail. Very exciting. Anybody that wants to be a docent and learn something about the history of our wonderful coast can start on May the 5th. It goes for six Saturdays. And you have to sign up by the 21st of this month. You go to HMBHA, which stands for Half Moon Bay History Association, docents, D-O-C-E-N-T-S, at gmail dot com. There will be a fourth listening session held in Spanish, to be held on April 10th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here at the Ted Adcock. We will have our follow-up retreat to put together all the information we've gotten from the four listening sessions. That'll be held on May the 1st here in the Ted Adcock. And the last announcement that I've got is KHMB Radio is now hosting a Latino program in Spanish on Sundays from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. So if any of you speak Spanish, that's a wonderful thing we've got now in our town. Okay, there's nothing to report out from recent closed sessions. I'm going to turn it over to David Bosch, our city manager, with updates to council.
I see John Doughty coming to the podium. You can go to the next one. You can go to the next one. Thank you, council, mayor, and community. Here, just to remind you that April 20th is Earth Day, and we will have our annual compost, or semi-annual, I guess, compost giveaway. And it'll start that day and run through the weekend, as long as it lasts. Also included is, with the new contract for solid waste, this will be one of our shred events in which you can bring up to three legal bankers boxes of items that you want, your old tax returns, or whatever it might be, and have them shredded safely and hauled away for you. So exciting. So keep that on the book. We'll be here again. There's some flyers around, and we'll be putting out the word further as we get closer to the date. Thank you.
Tell us again the date and the place.
April 20th. Sorry. Kelly at City Hall.
Thank you, John.
Yes.
We're moving on to the consent calendar, and I've been asked to pull items 1C and 1D. Anything else to be pulled? Can I have a motion?
Sure. I move that we approve the consent calendar, item 1A, waive reading of resolutions and ordinances, 1B, amendment number one to the agreement with Scapes Landscape Company for maintenance of Highway 1 and 92 medians. And that's it.
A second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda has been passed. We're moving on to 280, an ordinance amending Half Moon Bay Municipal Code, Chapter 9.11, skateboard park regulations.
Hello, Mayor, Honorable Counsel. I'm Matthew Chittister, your deputy city manager. And with me is Danielle Sanderson, our senior management analyst in the city manager's office. And we're here to talk to you about an update to the skateboard park regulations. And I'm actually going to turn it over to Danielle for the presentation.
Good evening, counsel. So some background on why we're here today is the original skate park was at Cunha Middle School. And in 1998, the city adopted skateboard park municipal code regulations. At the time, those met the requirements of California Health and Safety Code, Section 115-800. And we'll go over that in a minute. In 2016, the city opened the new skate park located next door. I'm sorry. Here are some pictures of both the old park and the new park. Some background on California Health and Safety Code, Section 115-800. It provides immunity to public agencies, and it was only applied to skateboards or inline skates. In 2016, it was amended to include other wheeled recreational devices, which included bikes, scooters, and wheelchairs. So our municipal code is currently out of date. The city's current policy prohibits the use of other wheeled recreational devices. And if you've visited the skate park, you'll see that there's many kids riding bikes. And scooters. So the current skateboard park users rides bikes, skateboards, and scooters. Since the park has opened, we haven't had any issues with safety or kids being hurt. Any incidents have not been reported. Recreation staff has gone out and spoke with some of the park users, and they've said that they use common sense, and there's no issues with safety. If one person is going down the bowl, they wait for the next person to go. And they don't have any issues with both scooters and bikes, as well as skateboards. We've talked to Public Works, and any additional wear and tear on the park is minimal. And they think that they can resolve those issues quickly, and it won't have any long-term damage on the park. So because the park provides such a positive environment for all kids of all ages to enjoy, we are recommending that the city amend the municipal code to allow for bikes, scooters, and wheelchairs. The Park and Recreation Commission supported this recommendation when we brought it to them. So our recommendation to you this evening would be to amend the city of Half Moon Bay Municipal Code in accordance with the updated California Health and Safety Code, Section 115-800, which allows other wheeled recreational devices to be used at the park. We will update the corresponding skate park usage policy and update signage. And that's all I have. Thank you.
I move staff recommendation.
I have one question. Anyone else have a question? You want to do the motion?
Second.
I will draw my motion.
Yeah, my question was, in reading this, I was a little confused about the recommendation for wheeled recreation vehicles because that would include more than just wheelchair bikes and scooters. It could include motorized wheeled vehicles. So I want to make sure that we're not dealing with anything that's motorized.
That is correct. The definition, and I'm looking for it in the staff report, is non-motorized bicycles, The definition, and I'm looking for it in the staff report, is non-motorized bicycles, scooters, wheelchairs, and inline skates. Can all, yes. So it's, the Health and Safety Code is specific about non-motorized bicycles, and we would agree to that.
Great, and rollerblades are allowed, doctor, anything?
Yes.
That's what an inline skate is?
I believe so.
Thank you.
Oh, treadways. No, you know, those.
Segways, no.
Segways.
Oh, boy, no.
I'm opening the hearing for public discussion. Is that what I'm doing? No speaker cards, so we're closing public discussion. Can we have a motion?
So I don't know if the motion is applicable now. This is just to have the hearing, and it needs to come back. Is that correct?
You can move, you can move staff recommendation. This is an ordinance, so it requires.
The public hearing, okay. So, thank you. I move staff recommendation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Thank you, and I just want to thank Danielle for all the work on this. She's been working on this for a while, and I think it'll be great for the community, so we appreciate it.
Thank you, Danielle. Sounds like fun.
We'll see you out there.
Okay, we're moving on to donor recognition and naming policy for the new Half Moon Bay Library.
All right. I'm glad to be before you today. I think this has been a long time coming, and it's going to be great for the community and for the efforts around the library. Just for a little bit of background, Danielle, did you turn this off? You did. There we go. So here's a photo of, I think this was done in February, mid to late February. This is a drone image of where the library was at at that point. Things are happening really rapidly. Several of you have already taken tours, and I know we're still scheduling tours for those that have not been through. It is an incredible facility. We are so blessed to have this in our community, and we're just grateful to see this happening. So we expect the new library to open sometime in August of this year. And just by way of background, the city and county, per the JPA agreement, split the cost of construction, and then additionally, the county JPA is contributing about $1.5 million towards FFNE, which is fixtures, John, what is it? Furnishings and equipment, thank you. The city portion, which is approximately $12 million, $6 million came from reserves that were set aside for this purpose, and another $6 million were paid for out of a loan from the county. As you heard tonight, the Friends of the Half Moon Bay Library have been very active and raised about $500,000 to date. One of the things that's been really missing and would be very important for raising additional funds is a recognition and naming policy. It's a very standard thing that is used to identify opportunities for people to make large donations and small donations as well, and be recognized as members of the community that really helped make such an important community asset happen. And having a naming and recognition policy will be an important tool to do additional fundraising, I think, along with having this beautiful building that people can really see and really feel what it's going to mean to the community. One of the great things is that the funds raised will be able to help retire the city debt, which will allow the city to use those funds for other important causes here in the community. So you have before you a draft policy. I'll just cover some of the high points, and then I can answer any questions you might have about the policy. I think the most important key is that it gives the city council complete discretion over the process. The policy is developed to, you know, create guidelines to kind of operate within. It allows us to bring naming opportunities, whether through donations or through recognition of individuals who've made a really great impact on the library, on the community, or maybe libraries in general, to you as a council to decide each time how those funds will be donated, will be accepted and used towards naming one of these rooms. It also allows the city to make those determinations based on kind of the appropriateness of the individual or group that is trying to name a room, or if something were to happen down the road, we can actually terminate a name if, if an individual or organization does something that is not appropriate and wouldn't be in the best interest of the community to be associated with that group. Each of the naming opportunities would be, be part of an MOU that we would develop with these organizations that would spell out how long that the room or the space would be named for them. Typically, it's about 20 years before you would change the name. The policy allows us to maintain the original donor recognition for the life of the building, and that way, if, you know, 20 years down the road, we want to remodel the space and rename a space through a donation, the original recognition will remain for the, for the life of the building. Each of the larger donations that are associated with naming a room or a space will be recognized with a bronze plaque, and that's what would remain there at the, at the room or the location that's being dedicated. Anybody that donates more than $500 to the construction of the library will be recognized on a donor wall, and that is slated to be placed right in the, the front lobby as you walk in through the front doors. It'll be a beautiful way to really bring the community together and see how much the community really participated in this process and, and helped make this library happen. The ability to name rooms or spaces would start at $25,000. So here's a draft of the proposed naming values for different spaces. As you can see, the larger rooms, including the community room, the children's space, and the adult collection, as well as improvements, like the net zero energy improvements, the solar panels that are going to make this building energy sustainable, those come with a $500,000 price tag. Smaller spaces that are very public-facing go at the $250,000 range, and then all the way down to some reading nooks that we have in the children's space, which are $25,000. And then at the bottom, you'll see the donor recognition categories, which will be also placed on the donor wall. And they range from Platten donors, which are the $50,000-plus donors, down to what we're calling the Cypress donors, which are under $500, and they'll receive written recognition and during, especially during our dedication and grand opening. And then I also attached here, as we're talking, just some of the floor plans and space designs that we can, if you have questions about any of these spaces, we can point out to you as we go through and talk about this naming policy. This is the first floor. You've got the children's area in yellow, the main lobby area in green, the community room in kind of the light blue, and then the non-public library staff space in red. And then on the second floor, you've got, the large green area is the adult collection, including the computer lab. In the lower left-hand corner, in brown, you have the adult, quiet reading room. And then in the upper-left corner, you have the adult literacy room in blue, several small meeting spaces in brown. The red is the maker space, and the yellow is the teen space. And then just to the right of the teen space is the rooftop garden, which will be a beautiful thing to be able to look out on from the other spaces. So with that, I open it up for any questions and discussion, and I went too far. I will say that we worked with the library JPA and the Friends of the Library in developing this policy, and I think we've gotten some good input and developed a pretty good policy. And I'm happy to take any questions.
No question, just a comment. I know that the, the Friends of the Library were anxious to get this in place, and rightly so, so I, I'm glad it was worked through collaboratively, and I support it.
This is very exciting. I think we're all in. Can I have a motion?
I need to read the recommendation first before I move the recommendation. I move staff recommendation on the donor recognition and naming policy.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a very exciting day. I think what this means is it'll be easier for people to give us some money. Okay, we're moving on to item 3B, Half Moon Bay Library Project Update.
In that chair, I have to adjust it. I'm a little shorter than he is. Thank you, Mayor, council members. Are we there? Yes, thank you. I am pleased to come tonight and give you an update and a little more detail to the library construction update than we normally do under the CMs item. So some of you have obviously had the chance to see it. I wanted to give the community a little taste of what we're looking at and what they're going to be seeing in the very near future. So, let's see. This is supposed to be a drone flyover. Gee, that's a really depressing thing. There we go. Hey, there we go, over there. All right. And we'll, hey! So this is, as of Saturday, so this is very recent, and you can see that the, basically all the windows are now in on the second floor area there. Work is proceeding, and we ultimately took down, if you noted, the camera that had been up because we were getting tired of looking at a picture of the roof of the community room. So this has been replaced with the drone pictures to kind of complete the construction project proceeding forward with it. And so that's just, I think, a great view, and you can find those on our website, and they go back now a couple of months, and we'll continue that and work forward with ultimately the time lapse picture for construction of the project. And that'll be really fun as we look at the ground, the grand opening and ribbon-cutting work and everything with that. So, if all of you in the community I know has been out there, and so I'll go through these fairly quickly, but, so the facade basically is in place now. The only thing that is really missing from that exterior front at this point, for the most part, is the front doors, and they're working on the assembly for the entryways. This is the reverse side, and that's the community room looking out from Parisima and back toward the entry point. Off in the front of the main entry point are raised planners, and those will be four sitting benches and landscape areas. And, and then this is the rear area, so this is the children's room on the first floor, and this is kind of the grand second floor above with the open windows and volume ceilings. And to the left then will be the children's play area, and to the right there where the lift is, is where the courtyard will be. And that courtyard is looked out to from the community room, and with the Friends and the community's donations, on the first gift, we were able to install this nano-wall, which this wall basically folds up and opens up, and that whole wall opens up out to the courtyard area. So that's really nifty, and we think was an absolute wonderful addition from the donations to use that, and I think the community will really, really enjoy having that. And again, the community room, this is the, this is the separator, so there's a wall, an accordion wall that, that runs here, so this can be split into one, made into a large room, or split into two distinct rooms. So this is Matthew's favorite spot, which is the little crawl-through tunnel area for the kids' area. So this is the elevator shaft here and the stairway, and that's the elevator, and the stairway is here going up, and so underneath here is going to be this little tunnel going, and this is the entire children's place here. And so incredible space, volume, community's going to love it, the kids are going to absolutely love it, and you'll find Matthew climbing through here at some point. Probably all of us, frankly. So here, you're looking at on the second floor, and this is where much of the collections, computers, and other things are going to be. This is the quiet room here, and what's really, really nifty, and we knew it was there, but we didn't know how much it was going to be there, is a wonderful view out to the ocean on a nice, clear day that we actually do have, seems like more and more, I guess, maybe with climate change, but definitely a great view out from there, and so wonderful. And then you can just see these volume ceilings and the glass and the light, and many of us have been there at different times, and even on the darkest dreariest of days, rainy days, this is just lit up naturally and just a wonderful space. So you saw those plans that Matthew was showing you. This is the teen room. This is the maker space here, and there's the elevator, and the stairway coming up or down, however you go at. And so the glass is in for these rooms now, and they're working on the interior. So you can see here, just in the last 10 days, the drywall all going up and, and the finish work starting around. And then these are the study rooms, and then this is the literacy room here, and these are the two restrooms here. So I was wondering, I think, may I, maybe I'll buy a restroom or something and name it, but I didn't see that on the policy. We'd have to figure out what the cost of a restroom is, so. Okay, all right. So it's exciting. We're amazed every day that we go out and look and deal with it, and the good news is, is that we remain on schedule. We are now roughly 86 days, 85 days left of construction time. As we've indicated in prior conversations, there's a difference between construction being over and the move-in and run-up for all the systems and getting the books and stacks and everything into the facility. So the opening day will be a little later than that, but you'll see basically the construction ending in roughly 80 to 86 to 90 days or so. And with, it looks like we're in good shape, and we were, I guess, blessed this, this year with not having a really wet season, and by the time we had the late rains, most of the work they were doing was interior, and they could work to the inside, and so the rain days have not significantly affected us out there. So amazing work. I indicated in the staff report that one of the changes that occurred recently was our changeover in construction manager, and we were very sad to see George Sanon leave us, and I can assure you that he was very sad to actually be leaving us as well. But he had a great opportunity with a great company and just had to take that. So Phil Becker has taken over, and Griffin has committed to, to finishing this project and getting it done and deal with it. They gave it, they found us someone, they brought him out of, out of retirement and, and with an outstanding background experience in, in large projects, public and private projects, and he continues the good work that George and the rest of Griffin put in. So the schedule continues to be there, and we continue to move forward with that. So if you'll recall, the council directed, after some change orders were brought to the issue, to ask that staff bring change order items that were either $30,000 or greater, and then also at a point where there became an aggregate of smaller ones to $100,000. And tonight, we're here to report and ask for your authorization approvals on several change orders, basically numbers 21 through 46. And also to ask that you maybe, given the basically 90 days out that we are from the end of construction, to forego the requirement for the reporting on these until the end when we close out the project, and we can report back where we are and what approvals we've made with regard to change orders. All of these things that are happening, small and big, are going to start to compress in roughly the 90-day timeframe we're in, and so we're concerned that, and don't want to be in a situation where we forced delay of the project because of a process. So tonight, we've, these are some of the major ones. These were what are included in your staff report, as well as the whole list is in your attachment to the staff report. These and these, along with the rest of them, basically the 21 through 46, account for about $289,000 in change orders. So not a small amount, but we believe all necessary and critical to this. So if you recall, we came when we budgeted and brought back this project for award of the contract at almost $18 million. We suggested, based on our construction manager and our designers, that we set aside approximately 6.4% for contingencies, as this is a very large and very, very difficult project in terms of zero net energy and a lot of different things to, to go into it. Previously, items 1 through 20 were about $82,000, and then 21 through 46 accounted for about, again, roughly 288,452, I think, or 289. So this number is really what we have left in the contingency budget is approximately 401,000. 400,000 of this was added back into this as a result of removing the Cunha parking lot, but we've programmed that Cunha parking lot replacement or construction project as a new CIP. It'll be in your 1819 proposed CIP for that. So we'd like to look at this as roughly around $400,000 left of the contingency budget, and we're happy with that. We'd love to have more, but we set aside what we believe was the, kind of the bare minimum point for this in terms of contingencies, and we are still roughly at a third left of that, a little more than a third left of that funding. And so we're, we feel confident that we're still going to be fine in terms of the contingency amount. So one of the things that we also discussed here is the Correa Street. So one of the things that Maz has inherited is work here on completing Correa Street in conjunction with ultimately the undergrounding district occurring, the library construction, and we and we received a grant from CCAG for some major improvements here to add to this mix, which are the bulb-outs and bringing these out to provide shorter distance for travel, safe routes to school here and here and new crosswalks, as well as green infrastructure in these bulb-out points there to take stormwater and treat that stormwater in that area. So what this yellow area reflects is the area in which the library will be responsible for constructing this project, and this area has changed a bit as a result of sort of reevaluating on the fact that we're going to have to reconstruct Correa because of a lack of basically structural base. We were able to reevaluate this front area and actually push out and do a road diet a little bit on Correa Street and still meet parking here and parking on the street, but also reduce this a little bit to make a little safer route, and this pushed out. The nice thing that we were able to do, oh my God, I totally messed it up. What happened? That's a weird one. Don't. Goodness. Sorry. So was we were able to expand in this about, by about eight feet, the plaza area in front of the library, so create a little more room for kids in the community to gather and have active space in front while still keeping Correa Street. So this is an issue that we're still working through. We have money that's in lieu money that we took in from PG&E that we were going to do slurry seal on, and we're sort of patching and cobbling together the funds, and we'll be coming back to council for that as a separate decision and action on this project. But right now, we are scrambling to make sure that Correa Street and these improvements are in place before we open the library, so we're not going to have a brand-new library and then shut down Correa Street in front of it. Right, Maz?
Right.
There we go, good answer. So that's why we wanted to make sure you're aware of it. We're aware of it, and we're going to, we're running as fast as we can to try to make this happen and make sure this is working. We were, we are looking tomorrow for energizing of the building itself, so the PG&E contractor's going to be out to actually put us on permanent power, and that's exciting because that allows us to actually begin installation, full installation of the elevator and various improvements to test all of the improvements that are put in, the heating systems, ventilation, all of the things that are in there that need to be on the permanent power. So tomorrow is an extremely important day because that's another milestone point that allows the project to really move forward. And so we were thankful for our friends at PG&E to help move us along on that. There was a bit of a hiccup, but that worked out for us. So again, tonight, straightforward request is that we ask you authorize the city manager to proceed with approval of change orders 21 through 46, and that you consider number two, which is to direct us to not come back to you, but to, in the interim steps, but to wait till we do a full report out with the closeout of the project. And then we'll give you a whole update on the contingency fund balance, all of the change orders, and the whole project together. Thank you.
Sean, questions?
Yes. Can you go back, I think, four slides? I just didn't finish reading the whole list.
Which one?
That one.
This one or the other one?
Previous.
That one.
That's the one.
So let me add a little flavor to this. So I'll take change order number 36. Change interior reclaimed wood to Douglas fir. So in the original drawings and plans, if I could, because this is an interesting story and the challenges that we have, there was an intention and plan to have reclaimed wood that came from the bottom of a lake in Panama be resurfaced, planed out, and then put into the interior of the library. Really cool, really nifty stuff, reclaimed wood, environmentally interesting and all those things, and beautiful. When they brought the wood up, they found that it was toxic. It had been at the bottom of a lake in Panama, and a lot of bad things had gone into the water and filtered down through that and into the wood, and so we ended up with wood that was hazardous material. We didn't buy it, thank goodness. So that, so, but we had to look for additional sources of potentially reclaimed wood and ultimately landed on going to the non-reclaimed Douglas fir. Now, it may, it did not, and those, the reclaimed wood did not affect our LEED status or anything related to our environmental standing or our scoring or anything with that, but that's just an example of the interesting parts of the change orders that we were dealing with.
Got it, thank you. That's a great example. And I just wanted to scan the list again because with a project of this size, it's not unreasonable to have these change orders. In fact, I think that's quite modest, frankly. So, and then if you move back to your recommendation, I have two thoughts on that. So I'll start with a motion. I move to authorize interim city manager to approve construction change order numbers 21 to 46. I'll stop there.
Second, please.
I'm going to second for discussion. There's something I might want to add, so I'll second it for now.
Okay, all in favor? Discussion first?
All right, here we go. So first of all, I'm excited for the library. I think it's, I can't wait to have the kids go in. I think they're going to love it. You know, I thought it was discussed on council as we talked about to have all change orders come back that were under $30,000. All these are over $30,000. All these are under $30,000, and now we're approving them. It does make sense. I agree with the cost and the whole piece. The piece that I think the public, and I think we need to, we need to talk about out loud to make sure that everybody's on the same page, and I thought you gave a great example. But when we talk about change orders, we're talking about something that was unforeseen, more or less, right? We didn't plan it out, it wasn't part of the plan for whatever reason, and yet we hired, you know, various people to design the project and then to follow through with the project. And so it's hard, I think, without talking about some of these, and again, we'll talk about them at the end, for the public to understand why we need to make these changes without anybody being at fault. And I read it in here, and it says, and it talks about, you know, it says, "Griffin and the city concur that the changes are necessitated by design issues or represent owner-initiated changes and are not the fault of the contractor or subcontractor." So as we go through the process, I just want to make sure that we all understand that that's how we're looking at this, and that it is less than 10% of the overall cost of the project. Obviously, we have to move forward with it regardless because it's not like we can slow it down, that'll just cost us more money, as is. So that's automatic. And I do feel like you've, you've been, you know, part of the process has been really ensuring that council's been very cognizant of all the costs on this project, and so have the city. And so, and I think we've done a relatively good job in the scheme of things. So I'm for it. I have, my apprehension on the issue is just kind of, it's hard for me to totally accept that we have these changes that aren't the fault or, you know, of someone, and I think it's good to walk through some of them to be able to have good explanations. So, I mean, we'll get there, and we'll go from that, so that's kind of my piece on it.
So my interest is in number two. I think it's a great idea to have a report at the time of project acceptance. I'd like it to be a little bit more than just documenting all the change orders. I'd like to see something more like, here was this change order, and it resulted from, you know, certain class of actions, like maybe regulatory changes or, you know, materials not available from supplier, but I'd like us to actually learn from this experience. I mean, it's probably the biggest construction project, public works construction project we've had, so I want to make sure that we learn from it and if necessary, you know, fine-tune our process going forward. So I want it to be kind of a analysis document, not just sort of like a grocery list of changes. So if everybody's in agreement with that, you know, I'm happy to support the staff recommendation. Yeah, I seconded it, yeah.
No, I'm good. Can we have a vote? All in favor? Let's have a roll call on this one.
Councilmember Eisen?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Kowalczek?
Yes.
Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We attack it together as one motion. I know, I know. So if you're, we would like a motion simply because you made a motion to require this, and so we just want to make sure we close the loop and say, okay, we understand the desire to see a little more detail, and we're happy to do that.
So, okay. So I move that we direct staff to submit a report and analysis at the time of project acceptance and closeout, document, well, documenting and analyzing change orders and the contingency fund balance. I think that's sufficient, yeah.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Eisen?
Yes.
Councilmember Kowalczek?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I have one question on that one, just before we close that out. So are we saying that in lieu, no more change orders would be presented from here on out?
Correct.
So anything that's big that comes up from now until then?
The motion was to not bring them forward because by the time we bring them forward, we could have delayed the project by 30 days or so, bringing it forward and dealing with that's where we're stuck, where roughly 90 days till BHM is supposed to be or designed to be off the site, so that's why, it's just compressed timeline.
So I'd like to offer this clarification. I don't want to stop the process, and I support the motion, and it was just voted on and approved, but I think we should keep the ball rolling, not stop the momentum, but every month, I'd like to see just a summary of any change orders so we can track along, rather than have us vote on them or approve them, I think we give that latitude to staff, but let's see them, at least in our city manager meetings, just so we know what's going on.
Thank you. That takes us to item 3B. Oh no, I'm sorry, 3C. We're going to take a five-minute break. Break has officially ended. We're reconvening city council meeting. Okay, we're moving on to item 3D, discussion of district-based elections.
Good evening, mayor and council. This item was added to the agenda to provide the council and the public with information on a letter the city received last month from an attorney in Southern California alleging that the city has violated the California Voting Rights Act by having at-large elections. Specifically, as I mentioned, the allegations are that the city's at-large elections provide racially polarized voting for the city's Latino population. So the city is 32% Latino, and since 2001, the city has had one Latina who ran unsuccessfully for the council and one Asian-American who ran successfully. Other than that, all 40 candidates since 2001 have been non-minority, so. There is also limited data for polarization analysis, as the city only has six or seven precincts per election, so that has proved difficult for some of the smaller cities to be able to accurately analyze whether to be able to accurately analyze whether the elections do provide racially polarized voting. So the California Voting Rights Act was enacted in 2003, and essentially, um, it states that an at-large election system may not impair voting power of a protected class. So it's established by examining voting results of elections where at least one candidate is a member of a protected class, elections involving ballot measures or other electoral choices that affect the rights and privileges of protected class members. Courts have used a variety of factors in considering whether the plaintiff has established a violation of the CVRA, including voting patterns that correlate with the race of the voter, minority preferred candidates which are not elected, and the extent to which members of a protected class bear the effects of past discrimination in areas such as education, employment, and health, which hinder their ability to participate effectively in the political process. It's important to note that the CVRA and an allegation of a CVRA violation does not imply that the city council or the voters are acting in a discriminatory, discriminatory manner, but rather that the electoral system within the city results in disenfranchisement of minority voters. So the arguments for at-large and district elections, those in support of at-large elections, the electorates, the elective officials are able to answer to the entire electorate, and those in support of at-large elections would argue that it's unnecessary in a small city where widespread voter outreach is possible. And those in favor of district elections argue that those elected by a district are more responsive to the constituents, there's increased voting power for a protected class, and that non-incumbents would fare better in those elections. So the procedure is once the notice of violation is received, which we, we received the letter on March 6th, so there is a safe harbor given to cities which protects them from litigation during those timeframes. Within 45 days, which for us would be April 17th, the city must adopt a resolution of intent to go to district elections, and then within 90 days of adopting that resolution, adopt an ordinance declaring the district maps. The CVRA also requires that four public hearings are held, and many cities have been able to make a pre-litigation settlement with the plaintiffs to extend the safe harbor in order to maximize community outreach. So if the plaintiffs know that the city is moving in that direction and they want to have additional community outreach, they will do a settlement that would increase the safe harbor. Some statistics, um, since 2006, approximately 90 cities in the state have switched to district elections. The majority of those have been in the past two years since these notice of violations have been going out. I've listed some cities that are comparable in size and demographics to ours. In San Mateo County, Menlo Park received its letter in August, and they're currently in the process of switching to district elections. And then South San Francisco received a letter around the same time that we did, so they're kind of on the same timeline that we are. So far, there has been no reported case of an agency prevailing in litigation for this, and the litigation is extremely costly, which is why many of the cities are just voluntarily making the switch. So potential next steps include, sorry, April 20th is our 45-day safe harbor date, so I was thinking of the April 17th meeting. Potential next steps would be for the council to direct staff to come back with a resolution of intent. The resolution of intent would declare the intent to transition to district elections, specify the steps that the city will take to do that, and estimate a timeframe for doing so. Additional potential next steps include extending the safe harbor to maximize community outreach, potentially having a districting committee or districting subcommittee of the council. If the council did move to district elections, the first election would be in November 2020. The county's deadline for district maps for November 2018 is July 4th, and with our safe harbor, we could go until July 19th and potentially longer if we extend that. The benefits of settlement versus litigation are that the city would have more control over the district boundaries, timing, and the cap that the plaintiffs could recover fees for is $30,000. If the city does go to litigation, it, the attorney's fees would be much more than that, and if we are defeated in litigation, then the judge would draw our district map. So, um, next, the staff is just looking for direction from the council as to where you want to go, what you would like us to bring back, any potential information you would like us to look into, and any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jessica. Council, do you have questions?
No, I can start if you want, though.
Sure.
So I was noticing in this, and I think we were talking about this at one point when, when this was coming up, but the Menlo Park Committee had asked for city council to come up with, or to ask for staff to come up with a variation of options. One to include dividing the city into, into districts, five voting districts, one for dividing the city into voting districts with an at-large and elected mayor. And one could even be, you know, then we have to get into the question of strong mayor, that, that aspect. But I think my, my vote would be to direct staff to come back with a couple of different options, what this could look like. I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to, to doing this. I would rather avoid litigation, and if this is, if this is deemed the right thing to do, for whatever reason by, whatever people, I mean, there are pros and cons to it. The, the pros, as, as far as, you know, I can understand, are, um, this allows certain districts to be able to make sure that if, you know, it, it might be easier for people to get elected, maybe minorities or things like that. The disadvantages, of course, is somebody that's elected in a district might focus most on their district, as opposed to the town as a whole. I don't really like that, because I like all of us looking over the town of Half Moon Bay, as opposed to a specified small district that we're trying to advocate for. I think it's more community-oriented to do, do it the way we're currently doing it, but I'm up for change and we'll go with the process. That's kind of where I'm at with it.
So I find the whole concept a little, like a broad brush stroke across the world of everybody must move to district elections, and we're such a small community. That being said, I, of course, am strongly in favor of ensuring there's equal representation, equal opportunity, and although I think if, if we draw district lines, you know, that, that may mean we have to duke it out a little bit amongst ourselves in the next election. But I would support seeing some recommendations, I, I think, from staff about how we might draw district lines, but it does frankly, I'd be really, really frank, we're, we're reacting to litigation that we'll lose. We're not thoughtfully considering the best thing for the community.
No.
And, um, at the end of the day, the best thing for the community is to ensure fair and equal representation, and I'll always fight for that. I'm not sure that this does that, but I think it doesn't take away from that. So in that regard, it's probably the, the best thing to do is to look at the district options and consider that. And so, unless that's enough direction for staff to come up with some options, but I think I'd like to understand what they are, and then how that would work. I'm, uh, and then the voting for a mayor at large, you know, I, in general, I was not in favor of that, but if we go to districts, it might make a lot of sense to have a mayor at large. Yeah. That's all my, that's my comments.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with you that that's sort of where we're headed. I, I don't really see, um, a path around that, so I'd like to see options as well. I, I think you're probably needing more definitive action on the 17th to go district, but incorporate around that some options for us. I, I think that one of the cons for me of district elections is sort of the, the sort of tribalism that it sets up, you know, where you only have to report to maybe two or 300, you know, voters in your neighborhood. And I, I do think that there's a need for at least one of those elected representatives to be elected at large, to sort of keep everybody focused also on the big picture. I think having an elected mayor also creates some strength on the part of the elected board to work with the city manager. I think if the council's divided up, I think in some senses that, that creates more strength in the administration to take that, that bigger view. So I'd like one of the options to be, you know, an elected mayor along with the, with the districts. And I think, I can't think of anything really that could be as momentous for Half Moon Bay as, as this. I think this is a really big change, so while we might say we're going district in April, I'd like to see us extend safe harbor and really engage the community. I think we need a citizen group. I think we need to allow the citizen group and other citizens to take a stab at drawing maps. I think it could be really momentous, so I don't see any reason to not optimize public input on this. I, I think it's really, really important. And I, I found this really, really good sort of pros and cons about district elections from a University of North Carolina website, so I decided to run through it really quickly. So the pro of district elections is each geographic area of the city is represented, and of course, scale is an issue here, right? Large cities versus small cities. Candidates and council members are closer to voters. Viewpoints that might not be able to win citywide can be represented. Better opportunities for minority candidates, racial or political, to be elected. More neighborhood grassroots campaigning, which is interesting, right? So less reliance on media and spending big bucks and more on, you know, networking with voters, you know, in-face contact, which I, I think that's a, a strong point. Campaigning should be less expensive as a result. Each voter has a specific council member to go to, so it might make, you know, citizens more comfortable with that sort of relationship, where you're a little more, you know, intimate. And then a low-profile election that will not get much attention, the voter's choice is simplified, there are fewer candidates to learn about. So, um, the cons, according to this professor, council members may represent only the interests of their districts, and we, three of us have spoken about that already. A candidate may be elected with few votes. Depends on turnout, right? We've had some really low turnout elections. Council members may have more divergent views, may have more conflict with each other. And one of the things about having at-large elected folks is there's more consensus building and less deal-making, right? You're gonna have people, you know, various districts coming to other districts saying, I'll scratch your back if you scratch mine, right? So there's a lot of potential for that.
I'll give you a stop sign.
Right. Voters may not know district lines and be confused about candidates. Because of one-person-one-vote requirement, districts may split neighborhoods. Council members may be more likely to intervene in day-to-day administrative matters affecting their district, because your neighbors are gonna be in your face, depending on the outcome, right? Best-qualified candidates may be concentrated in one district. An elected member who moves out of the district is disqualified from office. Depending on staggered terms, not all voters may be voting each election, reducing overall turnout. So, anyway, just food for thought. I thought I would, would, would share that. But I, so do you feel like you understand where I'm coming from then? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, um, I'm actually in favor of district elections. I'm, I'm sorry that it has come up with this kind of a deadline, because I really wonder what the community outreach is gonna accomplish. If we've decided we're gonna go for something like district elections and an at-large mayor, which I think all four of us like the idea of, if we have to go to district elections, what is the community input gonna say? What are, what are we gonna get from the community? Is this something we're telling them that they have to do, or we'll get sued? Are we gonna ask them, are they willing to put up money, the 40 million bucks that it's gonna cost us to fight this suit? So I'm a little, little unhappy about the timeline, not that that's staff's fault, it's the, the attorney from Southern California, is that where he's from? Who instituted the suit. The other thing I wanted to say was, staff has been working very hard on getting us a demographic study, so that we can really look at the demographics and know where potentially minorities are, where, um, where the different district lines are gonna fall. So I, I think that one of the points of community outreach might be helping us to draw those lines better, and that might be a useful thing. I guess that's, that's my, my take on it. I think if we are going to district, if we are not gonna fight this suit and we're gonna go for it, then I would insist on having an at-large mayor. I think that's critical to helping the council to work as a whole. We, we do a pretty good job of reaching consensus on most, most things, at least this council has, and I want to see that spirit of cooperation and, and willingness for everybody to, to pitch in and get something done continue.
Benefit of extending the, the safe harbor is a chance to educate the public, right? I, I think that's gonna be critical in terms of, you know, acceptance and understanding procedures for participation, and what it all means in terms of process and cost. I think it's, I think it's really important.
The other thing I'd like to see us do during this process is to have a discussion about the, about campaign limits, cost, campaign spending limits. I think that's gonna be an important thing in helping districts not compete with one another. So if you've got, if you've got a lot of wealthy people in one district, putting up a lot of money for their candidate, and, um, a lot of poor people in the same district, you know, it depends on where you draw the lines, but I think campaign spending limits is gonna be an important part of this.
If I could add, the city of Lake Forest switched last year, and they had a really great community outreach model, and they were able to extend their safe harbor for about nine months with this same attorney from Southern California. So I'm confident that if the council's desire is to do maximum community outreach, that our city attorney would be able to negotiate a reasonable timeline to allow us to do that, especially given now that it's not going to happen for 2018. We do have a little bit of extra time on our side anyway, so that shouldn't be a problem.
Great, thank you. Do you need anything else from us?
Shouldn't be necessary, thank you.
Okay, we're going to go back to item 1C on the consent agenda, and it was council member Kowalczek who wanted to pull this, so do you have something to say?
I have something to say. Don't need a staff report, a summary, just a, a question on this. I just want to make, be super, super clear. On the first page of the staff report under fiscal impact, it says the cost will be $219,000 and is subject to reimbursement. And I just, when I went through this, I said, is that under question whether it would be reimbursed? Subject reimbursement has, implies some openness, and I just want to make, I just want to understand whether it is or if it is just a kind of a procedural thing, or if it is in fact potentially at risk.
Factually, it is 100% reimbursable. The question is how much it's gonna be reimbursed, and that's really up to how much work is necessary. So that was really why there was any question in it. We don't think that they were, that, that they will end up charging out the entire amount of the contract, but instead of haggling over the dollars and, and landing on a lower number that that might be too low, we just put the entire amount that was remaining, our estimates are gonna be far less, but it will be fully reimbursed by PG&E. We will be 100% reimbursed.
Can I have a motion on item 1C?
Move to approve item 1C.
Okay. In favor?
Aye.
We move on to item 1D. I think it was council member Kralcik.
So, I would like to hear staff's perspective on this. This is $21,000. I was disappointed at the last council meeting and the discussion about, the SAM discussion for collection services, and we had a long discussion about SAM management under-delivering in terms of planning, operating procedures, standard operating procedures, preventative maintenance, and activities at a management level that were under-delivering, and then we, the council, approved supporting an organization that is under-delivering. So, then we come back to this one, which is $21,000 for legal services at SAM, and my previous position on this was, find it in your budget. You have a big fat budget, find it in your budget, cut costs somewhere else, and you've got a $3 million budget, you can find $21,000. And I hear the general manager at SAM tell us, "I cannot find $21,000 in my $3 million budget. It's not possible," just like I can't find her preventative maintenance procedures, or her policies, or any of those things. So, you know, I think she can find $21,000 in her budget, and I'm not gonna support this item.
Additional comment?
I'm going to support it. The city attorney and staff looked very closely at all of the invoices. We made sure that there was, there were no expenses related to, you know, defending against Half Moon Bay's action. There's been a lot of time spent on the ACL. I think it's a good move. I think it's fair to Carl, and I think it buys some goodwill with SAM, and it's a small amount.
What on earth is goodwill at SAM gonna give you? What has it given you so far? Let me tell you what it's given me over the last nine years. Anxiety. So, I appreciate your perspective, and...
I believe in choosing my battles, yeah.
Yeah, I've chose, the battle I'm choosing is I'm holding SAM management to a professional standard, and I'm not gonna yield on that standard. And I'll move to approve Consent Agenda, item 1D.
Yeah, I would like to discuss it a little further. Can I go? Yeah. First of all, thank you. Thank you for bringing this up, because I think, I think that you're right, you're right on to bring this up, and we should be discussing it. The unfortunate truth on this one is, unfortunately, I'm overly in favor of approving this, because I do separate the legal action of SAM from what you are identifying, which I couldn't agree more with. But the legal action that's happened from them, and we know that we've been involved in part of that ourselves. The goodwill aspect, I don't know, I don't know about that part, but in terms of getting through this and moving on, and not keeping this as a sticking point right now at this juncture, I think is something that is necessary, but I am so proud of you for bringing this up. I really am. So, I just want to say that.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. So, just one thought to you, Adam. You manage budgets. If you managed a $3 million budget, you tell me you couldn't track down $21,000 if you're a professional manager?
I don't know.
I know you could. Okay, I don't have any other comments. Thank you.
Okay, I am gonna approve of this, and my reason for doing that is that Mr. Nelson, the attorney for SAM, has done work on behalf of SAM. The one question we had a couple of months ago was his billing for ours, which we felt were related to the litigation between Half Moon Bay and our two sister agencies. And our attorney has gone over the invoices and come up with a figure for that. We have subtracted that amount from Mr. Nelson's billing, and the remainder is for work he has already done, and so I'm gonna be in favor of it.
So, my next final comment is, is that I am in no way suggesting we don't pay, SAM does not pay for his legal, absolutely, this bill should have long been paid for legal services. I'm no way suggesting we withhold payment for legal services. I'm suggesting we let SAM find a way to pay for it, and I'll just call the question and we can end this.
Can I have a motion?
I will second. There it is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I believe the ayes have it. Thank you. This ends the city council meeting for April 3, 2018. Thank you, everyone.